Meetings open. Now we're going to approve the agenda. Anyone have any move? In your position, second?
Second.
Any opposition? Move. Approve. Motion to modify the agenda, item seven and nine become one. And two. One and two. Any opposition? Carrier. Number seven is Megariver College, resolution to close the academic foundation division.
This action will ensure that the faculty from academic foundations will be housed in departments with other faculty in relevant academic disciplines, which will enhance assistance of students developmental needs in preparation for college courses. All affected faculty will retain their tenured or certificated status. This action was approved by the college council on November 28th, 2011.
Any comment?
What's the main purpose? The main purpose?
Okay, I would like to ask the representatives of Megarivers. Where are they going to sit? Over here? Okay. President Pollard and, oh no, he's sitting over here, okay. And Provost Johnson. Would one of you please explain the purpose of this action?
Please, if you don't mind, the provost will speak to it, but it is designed principally to eliminate the dual structures in academic affairs that was presented by having a college freshman study as well as a college within a college. This structure allows us to bring all these ones to the provost's behalf to speak to that.
Clearly, the need to develop a piece of continuum of content, learning, teaching, and assessment in each content area, mathematics and English is evident. I'll give you four quick reasons. First, a high number of students requiring development of course upon entry to the college. For example, those first-time freshmen who registered in the fall of 2009, approximately 6% were placed in lower-level reading, 8 and 1/2% were placed in lower-level writing, and over 52% were placed in lower-level mathematics courses. Two, we have poor passing rates both in English and in mathematics gateway courses, lack of collaboration between academic departments, department of academic foundations, and we have content drift because we had a high number of adjuncts teaching these introductory courses. We anticipate that the merger will improve outcomes for students in developmental courses, improve student skills in these critical content areas, improve instruction, and strengthen collaboration and research within the disciplines, and finally, strengthen the.
So what was the original purpose of this unusual setup? That you decided that it's not long necessary? I understand the goals, but what was the original intent?
The remedial courses were being done in this unit. Right, and now the faculty, some of them specialize in math remediation, some in English remediation. They're going to be moved to the departments of math and English instead of being kept in one place together. Within it. Which means you can better align not-for-credit and for-credit courses.
I think it's also important to understand that while the chancellor didn't drive this decision, this will enable us to put our best teachers in front of the students who have these very significant needs.
Yes, other institutions have already done this.
It just might be pointed out, because I have a feeling I understand where Trustee Sutton's question is coming from, that the prior structure is an older one that had been created by a prior administration.
We have two professors in the English department. We have five in mathematics. We may have this section. Now we will have, first of all, we have restructured. This gives us the right to redo and probably use some of our mathematics.
Do any other colleges still have this old structure?
Uh... Pretty much the last one with something just like this. We have another action which has some similar elements. Not exactly.
Any motion to approve? Don't say. Everybody in favor? Say nay. Carrier.
Item 1B19, Lehman College, Mexican Studies Institute?
The proposed institute builds on nearly a decade of work by the CUNY Working Task Force on strengthening educational opportunities for Mexicans and Mexican-Americans. The 2010 census showed the Mexican population of New York City to be close to 320,000, which represents a growth of 58% over the last decade. The institute will promote research on the entire lifecycle of Mexicans in New York, facilitate curricular development, organize academic conferences, assist students with finding internship opportunities, and will work with community-based organizations on activities promoting education and empowerment.
Questions? May I have a motion to move this item? Second? All those in favor, please say aye. Nays? Any abstentions? Item number 1B. Okay, 1B1. Queensboro Community College, John Jay College, ASBS, in accounting for forensics and technology.
All right, this program is part of John Jay's Educational Partnership Initiative known as the CUNY Justice Academy. The academy has been established with the goal of enabling access to John Jay baccalaureate programs by students at CUNY's community colleges. Through this proposed two-plus-two partnership with Queensboro Community College, after earning their associate degrees, students will transfer seamlessly to John Jay to earn their baccalaureate degree. The proposed curriculum combines accounting principles and finance, ethics and criminology, and law and investigative techniques. It will prepare students for employment with accounting firms and governmental entities engaged in investigating and preventing illegal financial activity.
Second? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Item 1B2, New York City College of Technology, City Tech and Construction Engineering Technologies.
This professionally-oriented program provides an upper-division curriculum for graduates of City Tech's AAS programs in construction management and civil engineering technology, as well as for other students with similar educational backgrounds. This affordable degree will open up more career paths for graduates because construction management professionals continue to be in high demand in the New York metropolitan area. Because of accreditation requirements, a waiver of the 120 credit policy is requested for this 124 credit program.
Karen? All right, now, any questions?
It's not a college, it's the B-Tech degree. It's a B-Tech degree. Yeah, yes.
Well, the critical point is he has to require four extra credits?
The, well, the most critical thing is to approve the degree.
All the degrees, all the degrees is the only one that needs these extra credits?
We have a few others at the university already that have to do extra credit for accreditation purposes. Because the professional, the professional degrees are accredited by professional organizations which have very specific requirements.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? All right. Item number 1B3, School of Professional Studies, EA in City Tech Studies.
Okay, this fully online program is designed as a completion program for students who have earned at least 30 college credits. Consistent with the objectives of a liberal arts education, the program aims at preparing students who can communicate effectively, think critically, and demonstrate an understanding and appreciation of diversity. Survey data show that the program will be of particular interest to students already working in the field and interested in advancing their careers in human services areas.
May I have a motion to move this item?
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye. Item 1B4, School of Professional Studies, MBE.
This interdisciplinary degree examines workforce issues across the curriculum, focusing on the intersections between urban studies and labor studies. It will help students achieve career objectives by equipping them with advanced knowledge and skills in the areas of urban policy, as well as in the administration and delivery of social services.
Motion to move this item? Second about Trustee Sutton? Discussions? Questions? No questions? May I have a motion to, all those in favor, please say aye. Nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number 1B6, Hunter College. 1B5, LaGuardia Community College, AA in Psychology.
This proposed program builds on the existing psychology track in the liberal arts and sciences and responds to significant student demand. Psychology remains one of the most popular undergraduate majors in the United States. Actually, it's the largest one of all the non-professional degrees. Students will be prepared to transfer into psychology programs at four-year institutions. One articulation agreement has already been signed and others are being developed. Students will develop problem-solving, analytical, and critical skills that will be valuable for a wide variety of employers.
Okay, I have a motion to move this item? Discussions? Questions? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? None? Okay. Item number 1B6, Hunter College, resolution to close the SEEK department.
The Hunter SEEK department was originally an academic department offering remedial courses, but its current function has shifted to academic advisement and counseling, tutoring, and student support services. Academic courses are no longer offered in the department. Consistent with system-wide practice and pursuant to a thorough performance review, the SEEK department is being converted to a program reporting directly to the provost. Faculty are being transferred to other departments. All affected faculty will retain their tenured or certificated status. This change was approved by the Hunter College Faculty Senate on December 14th.
May I have a motion? Second about Trustee Sutton? Questions, discussions? Not?
Yes, it's just going to become a program instead of being a department. So it will do the same, it will do the same service, services. If you want more detail, the provost is here.
Please.
Okay. Provost Rita Rabiner, please come up to the podium. If you could give us more detail of the service that will be provided.
The fact is, one of the reasons that we seek to make this move is to improve the quality of services for students. For example, right now, because all of our SEEK counselors are faculty, they are available on a nine-month rather than a 12-month schedule. Today's students need counselors and tutors and advice, 12 months a year indeed. We need to have coverage all day, all evening, 12 months a year for our students. Moving to a different model, the program model, SEEK is currently now both a program and a department. Moving to a program model will enable us to hire higher education officers as counselors or directors. It will, again, will charge the administration to take more responsibility, more accountability for the performance and the success of SEEK students. We are not seeking to reduce the program, to eliminate the program. We are seeking to better support the program, to better support its mission.
I'm sorry, how many? How many seats do you have?
We accept approximately 100 students a year, and we have something like 600 and some students at any point. We would be hiring a, we hope to hire a HEO director on an existing line, and we expect that this move will be revenue-neutral.
With respect, I'd like to ask, are the elected student representatives at Hunter College in favor of this proposal?
The elected student representatives, sir, this was not, this proposal did not come before the student government group separately. Students are a part of the Hunter College Senate.
Have any students spoken out in support of this proposal?
In support of the proposal? We have, to my knowledge, students have not, have neither spoken out against or for the proposal. Again, students are part of the Hunter College Senate, and they are certainly, you know, and many of our students have spoken positively about the SEEK program, but do not seem to weigh in on the specific matter of the department versus the program matter. We took this move after many studies, including focus groups of students, in which they talked, students talked frankly with our focus group leaders about some of the benefits and problems with SEEK. And certainly, one of the things that we heard again and again is students wished that counselors were more available. And that's one of the motivating factors, is that, you know, when, we're hoping that when the entity is a program, that we will be able to ensure that counselors are always available, in a way we can't now.
Forgive my ignorance, but other than academic advisement services, what are the services does the SEEK program at Hunter College provide?
Academic advisement is now one of its major functions. The other is to link students to tutoring. Big, a major function of our SEEK program also is summer programming. But to be frank, one of the reasons we chose to undertake this action is because summer programming was not occurring as regularly or as excellently as it might. This year, and I thank Associate Provost Zo for taking a lead here, we ensured that there was more and better summer programming, and our students received better results. So making the SEEK program a 12-month program is one of the motivating factors here.
Forgive my ignorance again, is there any tuition assistance provided through the SEEK program at Hunter College?
Yes, there is, there is, there are great, there are financial benefits as well as tutoring, advising, and summer programming benefits.
And in addition to the academic advisement services, will the tuition assistance benefits be compromised in any way?
Not at all, not at all, they will stay the same.
And the student representatives on the senate at Hunter College?
Yes.
By virtue of being members of that body, can you say confidently that the student body of Hunter College is aware of this proposal coming?
To be frank, I cannot. I do not, I do not know that student representation on the Hunter College senate means that the students at Hunter as a whole support or reject the proposal. What I could tell you is, I made a major presentation in front of the senate in December, and it was well-publicized, and we have not heard, you know, we've not heard any negative comments from the students, and student, student opinions, the opinions of students in SEEK were taken into account via focus groups. I just cannot reliably tell you that the students of Hunter support this proposal.
Can you provide an approximation as to the sample of students that participated in the focus group?
May I ask Associate Provost Zo about how many? Lucinda, can you talk about the focus groups at all?
I'm sorry, what was the total number?
Around 20. The focus, ideally, they say focus groups should be between five and eight per focus group, and we have three focus groups with around seven and eight.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Okay, item number 1B7, Megarivers. Oh, you did, did you do the eight?
No.
Okay. Item, okay, I guess, that's a penalty for being late. Item number 1B8, Central Office Human Research Protections Program Policy.
Okay, the proposed policy complements CUNY's existing policy on human research protection, which was adopted in 2009. The present document addresses the general structure and operations of CUNY's institutional review boards and permits the continuous adoption of standard operating procedures to ensure compliance with the evolving federal regulations. Basically, what it is, is that the federal government keeps changing the regulations, and this allows us to change our own regulations every time the federal government does without having to keep coming back to CAPRA each time for a vote.
We really don't have much choice, right?
No.
Unless we want to reject federal money.
I mean, I'll take responsibility. We made a mistake when we came with the original policy and procedure. It was about 120 pages long, and we should have foreseen that it was going to need regular updating. And so what we've done is we've sort of separated out the core principles, which is, which are embedded in this resolution, and then delegates to the Office of the Vice-Chancellor of Research in coordination with my office to the periodic updating of the procedures.
May I have a motion to move this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Next item is item 1B10? Okay, finally got it right. Hit the jackpot. Berut College, Institute for State and Local Governance.
All right, this institute will provide nonpartisan, non-ideological research and professional development opportunities for state and local governments, as well as for nongovernmental organizations. The institute will aim to harness the efforts of scholars and practitioners across the full range of policy challenges faced by the city, state, and the region. The institute will be housed at Berut College, which has the largest concentration of faculty with related expertise. Roosevelt House at Hunter College will provide venues for conferences, and faculty from across the system will participate in shaping the research and training programs.
May I have a motion to move this item?
So move.
Discussions? Not as far as the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Item number 1B11, City College, resolution to award honorary degrees at college commencement ceremony on June 1st, 2012.
Okay, there are four honorary degrees that are being brought today, and I am from City College, and also some additional ones from Queens College to explain to CAPRA members. These are being brought because of, it is now the procedure that before the board, the full board authorizes honorary degrees, they need to be considered by CAPRA, to make sure there's a full vetting of the candidate. Okay, so, the first one for City College is Kathleen Battle, who's an award-winning operatic soprano for the Doctor of Humane Letters. She's a distinguished African-American operatic soprano who's had a long and successful opera career and remains active in concert and recital performances.
Right, that's the awful.
Okay, the next one for City College is Ray Suarez, senior correspondent for the NewsHour on PBS for the Doctor of Humane Letters degree. Mr. Suarez is a leader in the news field and has been recognized by numerous Latino and Hispanic organizations. The third one is Sheldon Weinbaum, who's CCNY Distinguished Professor Emeritus of Biomedical and Mechanical Engineering for the Degree of Doctor of Science. Professor Weinbaum has made seminal contributions to biomedical engineering and is widely recognized for his groundbreaking research on atherosclerosis, among other research areas. He is one of only eight living individuals who have been elected to all three national academies. He's also rendered distinguished service to City College as an educator and advocate for a greater representation of women and minorities in engineering. And the fourth one is Harvey Kaylee, who's the founder and president of Mini Circuits, Inc., and CCNY alumnus, 1960, for the Degree of Doctor of Science. Mr. Kaylee is recognized as a world leader in the design and manufacturing of radio frequency, infrared, and microwave components. He's also very involved in philanthropic activities supporting education, people with disabilities, medical research, the disadvantaged, and the arts. He's established the Mini Circuit Scholarships for talented students and the Harvey and Gloria Kaylee Entrepreneurship Prize.
So, while running it past CAPRA is a good first step, realistically speaking, I'm not sure all, any of us are really full-versed in the sense of issues that things might have. It still might catch us by surprise in order. So, maybe we should consider giving a little more background, curriculum, and then, yeah. Fashion, all of those. Advance on meetings.
Well, I believe there was additional information distributed on each of them to you. Right. Oh, and we can't, it's not in there.
It's not in the electronic. That was it, electronic.
No, there's a next page.
Really?
But we will certainly ensure that all this information also goes to the full board.
This procedure is instituted to avoid what happened. And I'm not sure if it will prevent that. We might want to get it to the full board.
Yeah, we will make sure that all board members have it, but we, obviously.
At least I can check.
Okay, and the chancellor also distributes a memo to all trustees ahead of time. Obviously, we're never going to be able to prevent any.
Every possibility.
Yes. But we do our best, and we have looked into all four of these people, and they are very fine.
Would these approve by faculty, appropriate faculty who move at City College?
Yes, I mean, the procedure is they get approved first.
Just extra layer.
No, no, I know.
At City College.
Yes.
Yes. Let me, let me ask the provost, Moskowitz, Moskowitz is here. Could you describe the on-campus procedure for these approval? Take a microphone. Just sit here and you can take a mic.
Thank you. We have a honorary degree committee, of which I'm a member, so is the president, the chair of the Senate, and a number of other people. There are approximately a dozen people on the committee, including student representation. We are sensitive to the issue of reputation, and I assure you that, and we have done some due diligence, and I can assure you that we've found nothing that might be sensitive to these individuals. I have read, in fact, created some of the material that is before you, and I'm willing to describe these individuals in greater detail.
I think trustee Sutton's suggestion is a good one. I think, you know, given this round, I think with Ray Suarez and all these, I think, I think this is a fairly safe bet on this round.
Well, I think the most important thing is to care that this committee will have understood, fully understood, and pass on to the rest of the board, that this committee fully understands the process at the university. We heard that due diligence was conducted across the strata at the university's leadership. It's now come before us with all the deference, and we certainly can approve this because it moves on to the next level. So that if there are any surprises.
The chancellor will send us all the board.
Trustees get all of it.
Yes.
So I think we could, we're comfortable with proving, because they're going to be subject to two more.
All well taken. So may I have a motion to move this item?
Don't move.
Professor Kaplowitz?
Now, if this is an action item, does this mean that honorary degrees are now subject to a public hearing through the board of trustees at the public school to the merits of?
Let's ask our general counsel.
No.
Are the calendar, are the calendar?
Most of the time, correctly, it was the item of the case.
No, 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 it's been part of the calendar for a while.
So, a member of the public.
Indeed, another potential safety. Okay. Any other comments, observations, questions? Not, can I call? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, tensions? Okay, item number 1B12, Queens College.
Okay, so for Queens College, we have two honorary degrees. The first one is Sarah Miller McCune, founder, publisher, and executive chair of Sage Publications, a leading academic publishing house, and Queens College alumna from 1961. She launched Sage Publications and, oh, and the degree is Doctor of Humane Letters. She launched Sage Publications, an independent academic publishing company, in 1965, a few years after graduating from Queens with a degree in political science. Today, she oversees a global corporation with a presence on four continents. Ms. McCune is also a prominent philanthropist and is president of the charitable McCune Foundation. Oh, should go on to the next one? Sorry. And the next one is Orhan Pamuk, who is winner of the Nobel Prize for Literature in 2006, the degree of Doctor of Humane Letters. He's a prominent public intellectual and the first Turkish writer to be awarded a Nobel Prize for Literature. The Nobel Prize Committee described his work in the following way: "In the quest for the melancholic soul of his native city, he discovered new symbols for the clash and interlacing of cultures." Mr. Pamuk has received a number of other prestigious awards, that's in addition to the Nobel Prize, in different countries around the world, and has been accepted as an honorary member of the American Academy of Arts and Literature.
May I have a motion to move these two individuals?
So moved.
They're good.
Discussions? Okay, all right. Okay, may I have a motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, tensions? Okay, item number two, informational item.
Right, there are two items in my report today. The first one is an update on the Pathways Project. We've continued to make significant progress since my letter to CAPRA members a little over a month ago. Each campus has now designated someone as its liaison for all aspects of the implementation of Pathways. During January, we had two meetings for these liaisons, as well as for other senior leaders of each campus, to introduce and start to work on the many administrative aspects of Pathways. For example, one question is how do we designate the Pathways courses in our software systems that students and their advisors use to choose their courses? Another example is that we need to decide if any students other than brand-new freshmen who are required to do so, if any other students can opt into Pathways in the fall of 2013. What about students who left CUNY in their freshman year but are coming back after a year's absence? What about students who entered in spring 2013 but only took three credits? These are complicated issues, including because there is such diversity among our campuses, and we need to have discussion among both campus and central representatives to figure out the best approaches. We have also almost finished establishing the CUNY-wide committee that will review the courses submitted for the Common Core part of CUNY's new general education framework. This committee is divided into eight subcommittees, one for each area of the Common Core. Almost all of our 19 undergraduate institutions have a representative on all or almost all of these 19 subcommittees, for a total of about 135 faculty. The review committee as a whole will be chaired by Professor Phil Kastenitz, who's a professor of sociology at the Graduate Center in Hunter, and he regularly teaches undergraduates at Hunter. The committee to identify the, in addition, the committees to identify the first three to six courses for the largest transfer majors for all of CUNY are also making good progress. Many faculty are now deeply into identifying and designing courses for the Common Core, the new Common Core. My office continues to answer many questions about the Common Core and what may or may not be included within it. Campuses actually have a great deal of flexibility in terms of what they can put in the core more than they realize, and some faculty are coming up with very creative ways of structuring courses that demonstrate that flexibility. The second information item concerns the master plan. CAPRA members will recall that New York State requires CUNY to complete a master plan every four years, and the next one of these is due this coming June. We're making good progress on this document and already have a complete, though very much a first, draft. This master plan will focus on the financial stability afforded CUNY for the next few years and our ensuing ability to actually plan our actions for those years. A major aspect of that planning will be how to address the challenges that have arisen over the past couple of years when enrollment grew so quickly, more quickly in fact than did full-time faculty. Over the past couple of years, we have actually lost ground in terms of increasing our students' exposure to full-time faculty. This is a major concern, given that such exposure is associated with increased student success. We need to find ways to grow our enrollment at a controlled rate that maximizes access but enables us to simultaneously grow our faculty at an even higher rate. That's it, thank you.
May I ask a question? Do we have, couldn't you gather the master plan, is it done internally or do we have outside of?
Depends how you define outside.
Do we have a consultant working with us from the outside?
We do have a consultant, but it is someone who used to work at CUNY, so.
But it's an individual, not a firm?
Yes, an individual, who actually worked on some of the older master plans a couple times ago.
So there's no external review of the plan at any point? In other words, someone from the outside look at it from over here?
Well, we'll have many people.
As a matter of course, we always do that, and that will be the case, just that the individual or the firm has not been hired.
You will do that? Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Do the trustees get the links of the, of the, of the?
What I will, we started with the president, chief academic officers, chief financial officers, really, and it sends faculty senate, all of the university student senate, to ask for comments about going forward. And as those comments come in, we try to incorporate as much as we can. I will be making a briefing to the trustees in the next, either the next board or the board after, well before the master plan is put into actual writing, just to get, just to get, to the trustees.
Trustees will have no opportunity.
Oh, no, that would be the whole point, really get solicitation first to give them a broad scope of the kinds of things we want to look at, and the trustees put some texture on, which we've always done in the past, if we do that again.
Here's the hard question, did I hear any timelines? I know, I heard soon, June is the date for the draft, the final, the final in June.
Yeah, it's not a hard date. It's not a hard date, that's a date that we're looking to make this happen. Well before that, we will reach the trustees, to get their, get their sense of what our priorities are.
I wouldn't mind getting packages of other master plan, just a great master plan, just a little more.
I'm assuming an executive.
Oh, I'm sure he'll read the whole thing.
You can read it very quickly.
You can? Is that short?
No.
Yeah, I know. You know, we changed, when we came up with the CUNY compact, we made the master plan really the domain from which ideas for financing university derive from. So, the master plan at this point in our history is a very important document, because it is the things that we wish to aspire to become, which is what we put in for financing, with consideration of both the governor and the state legislature. So, in that sense, it is the book from which we derive our ideas for financing. So, a key component of the master plan upfront would be the objectives of the university that will drive the master plan.
Professor Kaplowitz, now's your turn.
Thank you. I would very much like to see the list of the 135 or so faculty working on the, would you provide that?
Yes, as soon as, we've sent invitations out, and as soon as they've accepted.
Of course.
We will, just as we have done with all the other committees, it'll all be posted on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, we now have about 250 faculty who've been involved in various committees for Pathways since last summer.
This would be an interesting plan. Challenge. Any other discussion, any other item? Not, may I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you all for coming.